I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Mike Land, can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
Thank you. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight, braving the weather. Our next meeting, regular meeting of the Raton City Commission, is scheduled for Tuesday, May 8th, 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. We have two proclamations to read this evening. First one on the list is Arbor Day. Mayor Pro Tem.
In celebration of Arbor Day, April 27th, 2018, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be reduced with erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, does James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim April 27th as 2018 as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to recognize and celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, he urges all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, he hereunto sets his hand and the seal, cause the City of Raton to be affixed this 24th day of April 2018.
Do we have some money to accept?
Let's see if you can get two more pictures. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, more pictures? More pictures.
Alrighty. Thank you. Alrighty, our next proclamation is recognizing the accomplishments of Robert Treheal, Commissioner Chavez.
A proclamation honoring a champion, Robert Treheal. Whereas Robert Treheal started boxing at the age of 13, and is a graduate of Raton High School class of 2010, and whereas Robert, the real deal Treheal, started MMA fighting in 2012, he has nine wins, two losses, and just won his sixth MMA title. And whereas Robert's title include two-time winner of the 125-pound division, No Mercy Extreme Champion, two-time winner of the 135-pound division, No Mercy Extreme Champion, the 135-pound division Paramount MMA Champion, 135-pound division Fusion Fight League Champion, the 2016 Colorado Nationals Jiu-Jitsu Champion, and the 2017 Tournament of Champions Jiu-Jitsu Champion. And whereas Robert Treheal uses the slogan "Don't Blink," since his average fight time is less than one minute, and whereas Robert Treheal fights for the honor of brain cancer awareness, breast cancer awareness, and suicide prevention, and whereas Robert Treheal also gives back to his community. He has talked with Raton Public School students during show and tell, and talked to them about intense training it takes to be an MMA fighter, and expressed to the students that they can do anything they set their minds to. Now, therefore, does James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby honor Mr. Robert Treheal for his dedication to the sport, and for his MMA championship titles, and ask all citizens to express their pride in Robert, and thank him for bringing honor and pride to the City of Raton through his achievement. In witness thereof, Neil Sagata hereto sets his hand and seal, and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 24th day of April 2018.
You want to bring your family up?
Oh, no, I blinked.
Okay, at this time, we would welcome any comments from the general public. Is there anyone out there wishing to address the commission at this time?
You might have scussed.
That's true. And if you just receive a proclamation and you don't want to get bored with the boring stuff, you're free to go. Okay, didn't see anybody for comments. Committee reports from commissioners. Of Raton Water Works, Mayor Pro Tem, or Commissioner Chavez.
I refer to Mayor Pro Tem Sagata, I was not present.
Okay, Mayor Mayor Pro Tem Schuster, are you going to refer to Mr. Campbell?
I am going to refer to Mr. Campbell. I was present, but he looks like he'll give a better report.
The Water Board actually met last Tuesday at 6 o'clock on April 17th. The first agenda item was actually for AE Comm Engineering, it was consideration of the Lake Malloy Service Billway Modification Project Engineering Task Order, which is to do the concrete at the crest of Lake Malloy Service Billway, to repour that concrete, and this was a task order to begin design of that project. After completion of design, before any work was to take place, it would have to be approved by the dam safety bureau. This does get us prepared to pursue that project, and also to pursue some legislative funding. So that project was approved and moved forward with. The second item was consideration of the Lake Malloy Preliminary Engineering Report Update, based on the revised hydrology. That item was postponed until we actually get final hydrology from the dam safety bureau approved. That has been turned in, but it has not yet received their approval. The Water Board then went through all the documentation, which this commission at its last meeting got, some of it was actually for approval of all the filter plant project bonding documentation, to approve it, to where once we do, from the Federal General Council, get approval to present that at this commission meeting, we can begin the public hearing process. They did review all that and actually approved that also, so we can move forward with that project. And the last item was, they did approve the 2018-19 proposed budget. At this point, it is our proposed budget, will of course, will be included with the cities, and the final budget will be prepared by July 1st. That was due to a lot of approval of all the filter plant project bonding documentation, to approve it, to where once we do, from the Federal General Council, get approval to present that at this commission meeting, we can begin the public hearing process. They did review all that and actually approved that also, so we can move forward with that project. And the last item was, they did approve the 2018-19 proposed budget. At this point, it is our proposed budget, will of course, will be included with the cities, and the final budget will be prepared by July 1st. That was due to a lot of approval of all the filter plant project bonding documentation, to approve it, to where once we do, from the Federal General Council, get approval to present that at this commission meeting, we can begin the public hearing process. They did review all that and actually approved that also, so we can move forward with that project. And the last item was, they did approve the 2018-19 proposed budget. At this point, it is our proposed budget, will of course, will be included with the cities, and the final budget will be prepared by July 1st. That was due to a lot of approval of all the filter plant project bonding documentation, to approve it, to where once we do, from the Federal General Council, get approval to present that at this commission meeting, we can begin the public hearing process. They did review all that and actually approved that also, so we can move forward with that project. And the last item was, they did approve the 2018-19 proposed budget. At this point, it is our proposed budget, will of course, will be included with the cities, and the final budget will be prepared by July 1st. That was due to a lot of approval of all the filter plant project bonding proposed budget. At this point, it is our proposed budget, will of course, will be included with the cities, and the final budget was due to a lot of...
Yes, please. If you're all okay with that.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Are you having fun?
Oh, yeah.
That's what we want, is you having fun. Is anybody here watch the kilter? No. They know what I was talking about, if they did. Okay. I was going to tell you where the song is from.
They were married in the morning, along with the rising sun. He vowed that he would protect her with his silver gun. One day he left her, said he had to go, down to the city in the valley far below. His best friend was dying, had something to say. Told her he'd be back in the day. Told her he'd be back in the morning, along with the rising sun. He said, "Have no fear, while I'm bound, love, I will leave you my silver gun." He did not return until late the next day. The river had been flooded, and it washed the ridge away. He had a funny feeling that something was wrong, so he pushed his pony on. Told her he'd be back in the morning, along with the rising sun. Heard a noise at the window, and she reached for the silver gun. Then rode into the clearing, through the rain and hail. He looked up toward the house, and turned a deadly pale. Saw a strange horse tied up to the barn, and his wife hid it out of his arms. Turned and rode off into the badlands, as fast as his horse could run. Thought he'd come back in the morning, to forgive her for the wrong she'd done. When he came back next morning, through the open door, he saw his silver pistol lying in the sun. Stopped when he saw his wife lying on the floor, shitting and killed by the silver gun. If I would have trusted your love, dear, jealousy makes you blind, they say. I would have seen you as not holding you, but you were fighting and trying to get away. He buried her in the morning, along with the rising sun. Signed her in the coffin, he laid the silver gun.
You know, thank you all for coming, I just wanted to reiterate that, and I'm in for a treat. I'm honestly kind of hoping somebody's cellphone does rate, because me answering your phone is a whole other act of insanity. Preparation for this show, I went home and mentioned to my family, you know, and came up with some stories, or jokes, or riddles, and my 9-year-old had a riddle she'd just heard at school, and it stuck with me, so I'm going to go ahead and share that with you all. A cowboy rides into town on Friday, he stays three nights, then he rides back on Friday. How did he do that?
Horse horse on Friday.
It's still me. Yeah, I did it in rehearsal. Got a cowboy that rides into town, and this is a town he's never been to before. The locals in this town, let's just say they don't care for strangers a whole lot, so they, they just don't care for strangers. So he goes up to the bar, goes into a bar, ties his horses at the hitching post, orders him a drink, sits there, has his beer, finishes up, goes to leave, walks out, somebody's stolen his horse, so he goes back in the bar. "All right, which one of you fools stole my horse?" "Silent." "Okay, that's it." Wields out his gun, throws it over his shoulder, fires one into the ceiling, sorry, it's Nobody answers, he said, "Okay, folks, I'll tell you what, I'm going to sit here and have one more beer. By the time I'm done, my horse better be back where I left it, or I'm going to have to do what I had to do when I was in Texas, and I'll tell you what, I don't like what I had to do when I was in Texas, so he better be back there." Goes and sits, has him another beer, pays the bartender, walks out, lo and behold, the horse is right back where he left him. Saddles up, gets on, goes to ride out of town, and the bartender comes out and says, "Excuse me, partner, I just got to ask, what happened in Texas?" "Oh, well, I had to walk home." I'd like to introduce, for sure most of you know both of these gentlemen, Mr. Jared Chatterley, he's going to tell us a story about outlaw of the west, and actually outlaw that was here nearby, and then Mr. Abe Elliott's going to play some music for us as well, so please help me. All right, so any story about the old west got to involve an outlaw, preferably a notorious outlaw. Well, we happen to have some of those right around here. So I'm going to tell you the story of Black Jack Ketchum. Now, Black Jack Ketchum and his gang were train robbers by occupation, and last of the real wild west outlaws, being in business right up to about the turn of the century. Now, one of their favorite hideouts was a place called Turkey Creek Canyon. If you go out of Simroon, headed up towards Eagle Nest there, through Simroon Canyon, there's a side canyon that goes off, and that was Turkey Creek Canyon. Very convenient hideout for the gang, being close enough to Simroon, that if they needed ammunition, food, some feminine attention, they didn't have very far to go. But they were far enough away, that they weren't concerned about anybody harassing or bothering them. Well, there was a sheriff from Colorado, who woke up one morning, going through his daytimeer, harassed the Black Jack Ketchum gang. Well, it was on the list to do, so he rounded up his posse, rode up there towards Simroon Canyon, found the gang in their hideout, and there was a gun battle that took place. All the gang were wounded, some faster than others. There was a deputy, who was a member of the posse, who got shot in the leg. He happened to have a pocket knife in that pocket, the bullet hit the knife, drove the knife into his leg. He was later brought back to the St. James Hotel, where he passed away from infection, and he's one of the 28 men died in the St. James Hotel. Now, Black Jack Ketchum was kind of a little bit of a loose cannon. So one day, his gang decided they had enough of him, and it was time for him to go. So they woke up, and they said, "Hit the road, Jack." And you know how the rest of it goes, so they kicked him out. So he went out on his own, and tried to hold up a train, at a place called Robber's Pass, out in Union County. Anybody here train robbers, tried to hold up a train before? Well, I'll tell you, holding up a train's really hard. I've only seen one person ever do it, and he wore his underwear outside of his pants, he had a cape, reversion equipment knife. Black Jack Ketchum wasn't Superman, and so it didn't go well for him. He got shot in the arm as he was attempting to rob the train, and prevented his escape. He was arrested, brought before the judge, the judge said, "You are to be executed for your crimes." And so in April of 1901, they led him to the scaffold, put him on the gallows, and with the last words of, "I'll be in hell before you start breakfast, boys, now let her in." They took the black over, hood over his head, the rope around his neck, and due to some miscalculation, they pulled the trap door, he fell through, the rope went hot, and popped off his head. Now, the picture on display in the Old Mill Museum, is a picture of Black Jack's body on the ground, and the black scaffold is hit, was just a little too far away. Well, then it became a free show, at the execution of Black Jack Ketchum, they cropped up the headless body, and the dignitaries, and there's a few dignitaries here, who have had the option to stand, and get a picture taken, with the headless body, hip left. Now, one of his last requests was to be buried face down, so that the sheriff that arrested him could kiss his head on his way to hell. Well, being who he was, well, actually, then, as it is now, it's illegal to execute people in New Mexico by decapitation. So prior to burying him, they hired a seamstress to sew his armpit off. Now, being who he was, he wasn't allowed to be buried with the civilized folks there in Clayton, he had to be buried with the riffraff out of town. Well, because of who he was, and how the execution went, some weird things started going on in his gravesite, seances, weird stuff like that. So the city fathers of Clayton decided it was best to dig him up, and bring him back into town. When they did, they found some interesting things. One, that he didn't quite get his last request, because although he was buried face down, the seamstress had sewn his head on backwards, and he was still face up. And for having done no preserving practices on the body, he was in a remarkable state of preservation, which led some folks to suspect that he was a zombie, vampire, Black Jack Ketchum, walking the streets at night. Others believed that he was just drained so much during his life, that he pickled himself, and that's why he is so well preserved. But if you don't ever get to see the picture there on the walls of the Old Mill Museum in Simroon, if you're ever headed through Clayton, stop at the Dairy Queen, and as you finish ordering your nice hamburger, and go to get your condiments, on the wall are the pictures of the execution of Black Jack Ketchum. Don't fill that appetite for that hamburger. Nothing like a story of a good outlaw.
Now, that is a hard act to follow, but I think you'll be delighted with our next piece. Let me give you a little background. There's going to be a piece presented as a reader's theater. Reader's theater is something that started in schools as a literacy tool for children. So a teacher or someone would arrange a story or a poem, and then have the kids read it with dramatic effect, taking part. So it's kind of like acting, but you're reading, but it marries the two things, and so we're going to have one of those performed on stage tonight by my kids. Tonight, you're going to hear a little poem, it's called "The Cremation of San McGee."
All right.
Now, San McGee was not... Now, Sam McGee was not wanted, dead or alive. But he did want certain things to happen if he died. You see, he was a southern boy who went north during the Klondike Gold Rush into the Yukon Territory, and he hated the cold and the thought of being buried in a frozen grave. So he made some last requests to his trail companion. But I'll let Creed Carson and Tess Chatterley tell you the rest of the story.
Hi, fine, gentlemen, right?
You're welcome.
"The Cremation of..."
"Sam McGee."
"By Robert W. Serks." "There are strange things done in the midnight sun."
"By the men who moil for gold."
"The Arctic trails have their secret tales."
"That would make your blood run cold."
"The northern lights..."
"Have seen queer sights."
"For the queerest they ever did see was that night on the marge of Lake Lebarge I cremated..."
"Sam McGee." Now, Sam McGee was from Tennessee.
"Where the cotton blooms and blows." "While he left his home in the south to roam round the pole, God only knows."
"It was always cold, but the land of gold..."
"Seemed to hold him like a spell." "Though it often say in his homely way that he sooner will be held." "On Christmas Day we're mushing away over the Dawson Trail."
"Talk of your cold. Through the parkas fold it stabbed like a driven nail."
"If your eyes you'd close and the lashes froze, though sometimes we couldn't see." "It wasn't much fun, but the only one that to winter was..."
"Sam McGee."
"And that very night as we laid back tight in our robes beneath the snow, and the dogs were fed and the stars o'erhead were dancing heel and toe, he turned to me and..."
"Cap."
"Says he..."
"I'll cash in this trip, I guess. And if I do, I'm asking that you won't refuse my last request."
"Well, he seemed so low that I couldn't say no, then he said with a sort of a moan."
"It's the cursed cold and it's got right hold till I'm chilled clean through to the bone. Yet tain't bein' dead, it's the awful dread of the icy grave that pangs. So I want you to swear that confound warfare, you'll cremate my last remains."
"A cow's last need is a thing to heed, so I swore I would not fail. And we started on at the stricker dunnit of gosh, you'll gasp with pales. He crouched on the sleigh and he raved all day."
"Of his home in Tennessee."
"And before at nightfall, a corpse was all that was left."
"Of Sam McGee."
"There wasn't much breath in that land of death, and I hurried horror driven, but the corpse half hid that I couldn't get rid."
"Because of a promise given."
"It was lashed to the sleigh and it seemed to say."
"You may tax your brawn and brains, but you've promised to, and it's up to you to cremate those last remains."
"Now, a promise made is a duet on paper."
"And the trail has its own stern code."
"In the days to come, though my lips were numb, in my heart, how I cursed the load."
"In the long, long night by the lone firelight..."
"While the huskies were out in the ring."
"Howled their woes to the homeless snows."
"Oh, gosh, how I loathed the thing! And every day that quiet clay..."
"Semed heavy and heavier to grow."
"And on I went, though the dogs were spilt and the grub was getting low. The trail was bad and I felt half mad, but I swore I wouldn't give in. And I'd often sing to the hateful thing."
"And it hearkened with a grin. Till I came to the marge of Lake Lebarge, and there a derrilth lay."
"It was jammed in the ice, but I saw in a trice that it was called the Alice May. And I looked at it, and I thought of it, then I looked..."
"That's my frozen chum."
"Then here's that I with a setting cry is my crematory of mine." "So flicks I tore from the cabin floor and I lit the boiler fire. So cool I found that I was lying around and I heat the fuel higher."
"The flames just soared in the first roar, such a blaze you seldom see."
"And I threw a hole in the glowing coal and I stuffed in Sam McGee." "And I made a hike, cried in it like to hear him sizzle so."
"And the heavens scowled, and the huskies growled, and the wind began to blow."
"It was icy cold, but the hot sweat rolled down my cheeks, I don't know why, and a greasy smoke in an icky cloak."
"Was streaking down the sky."
"I do not know how long the snow I wrestled with grisly fear, but the stars, but the stars came out and danced about. Here again I venture here. I was sick with dread, and I bravely said, 'I'll just take our peepin' inside. I guess he's cooked.' And it's time I look, and a door I open wide."
"And there sat Sam, looking cool and calm in the midst of the furnished door."
"He wore a smile, you could see it for a mile, and he said..."
"Please close that door." "It's warm in here and I greatly fear the let and the cold and the storm. Since I left Plum Tree down in Tennessee, this is the first time I've been worn."
"There are strange things done in the midnight sun."
"By the men who moil for gold."
"The Arctic trails have their secret tales."
"That would make your blood run cold."
"The northern lights..."
"Have seen queer sights."
"For the queerest they ever did see was that night on the marge of Lake Lebarge I cremated..."
"Sam McGee."
Hi, David. I understand it's mighty cold in the, in the northwest and under that fiery sky.
It's dark, actually dark.
In the land of that midnight sun. But I'm here to introduce a, a young lady who's going to sing for you, and she's going to play your guitar, and she's going to be accompanied by Mr. Elliott. I'd like to present Laura Robertson.
Evening, everyone. Maybe a song will play for you. You might recognize the tune. The words are a little bit different. You're welcome to sing along if you can catch on.
How y'all doing?
Got to remember where I am here. Let's see, okay. I wasn't going to tell this one, but it actually goes pretty well with the kid's story, with the Chatterley story, so I'll tell. Well, a young lady was eating breakfast with her, with her grandfather one day. And he told her the key to happiness, living a happy, long, healthy life, was to put a little pinch of gunpowder in her oatmeal every morning. So she did. Every morning, she had a little pinch of oatmeal or gunpowder in her oatmeal. She lived to be 103 years old. When she died, she left behind eight kids, 23 grandkids, 37 great-grandkids, two great-great-grandkids, and a 50-foot crater with a crematory. So, the old cowboy died. Not up to the pearly gates. Saint Peter asked, "Say, cowboy, you ever did anything of much merit or, you know, much importance in your life?" Thomas said, "You see, you know, one thing comes to mind." Saint Peter says, "Okay, what was that?" He said, "Well, I was out vacationing in the mountains of Montana. Said I come across a biker gang. And they're just being awful to this young lady. They're, they're harassing her, looked like they're getting ready to beat her up. So, I went up to the biggest, meanest, ugliest woman with the most tattoos, and I told them, 'Listen here, buddy, you leave her alone.'" He just laughed at me. So, I ripped his nose ring out. I told them, "That's it." I kicked his bike over and I said, "I want the rest of you to listen to me. If you don't, I'm going to take care of each and every one of you." Saint Peter was in awe. He said, "Wow, when did that happen?" "Ah, about two minutes, isn't it?" Once again, we've got another story by Mr. Jared Chatterley, accompanied by Abe Elliott. How we welcoming them?
All right, so... Must have old blooded that story about another notorious outlaw. So, I'm going to tell the story of Davy Crockett. Now, I'm sure you're all thinking Davy Crockett, congressman from Tennessee, supposedly died in the Alamo. Listen to the story. He got his grandson, who was also named Davy Crockett. Now, the grandson Davy Crockett moved out here from Texas with his foreman with this idea they're going to be big-time ranchers. I mean cattle barons, tycoons, living the good life. Well, they quickly learned that ranching was a very difficult job. And being inherently lazy, said they didn't want to do that. So they started hanging around Simroon. And as the old saying goes, idle hands in the devil's workshop. And it wasn't very long before they got into trouble. So one evening, they're, uh, at Schweng's Gambling Hall, drinking it up, having a good time. Um, Davy Crockett pulls out his pocket watch. The evening is getting a little bit late, might be time to head on, so puts his watch back in his pocket, and they start heading towards the livery stable to get their horses. And as they are, they pass the St. James Hotel. Well, the St. James, it was rocking and rolling that evening. The St. James, plenty of stuff going on. So Davy Crockett looks at his watch. "Well, it's really not that late. There's still time for a little party." So he and his foreman go walking into the St. James. Walking out were a couple of Buffalo soldiers. These are black soldiers stationed at Fort Union, cavalry soldiers, who are walking out. When Davy Crockett saw who it was, he pulled out his gun, shot them. Saw another group of soldiers playing cards at the table, shot them. Ended up killing four soldiers. He and his foreman then ran out of the St. James. They couldn't run to the livery stable anymore because that's what the rest of the soldiers were spending the night. So they took off on foot. They were arrested at a ranch just out of town, brought before the judge. The judge said, "Well, did you do it?" "Well, yeah, we did it." "Anybody see you do it?" "Oh, a lot of people saw us do it." "Well, had you been drinking?" "Oh, yeah, we've been drinking." "Oh, well, then you're free to go. You're intoxicated. You're not responsible for your crimes. Go ahead. Have a nice day." So you can imagine, you killed four soldiers in cold blood and get away with it. Well, you're above the law. And that's what, uh, Davy Crockett and his foreman thought. Ended up being, just like you see in the movies, they'd come running to Simroon, shooting their guns up in the air. They would, uh, ride into businesses on their horse and do business off the back of their horse. They would go up to the citizens at gunpoint and say, "Get in the bar. You're going to buy drinks for everybody here." They'd slap the sheriff around, and if you can't do nothing to us, we're above the law. So this went on for a couple of weeks until the people of Simroon had enough. And they approached the sheriff and said, "We're paying you to do a job. It'd be nice if you did it." Well, the sheriff, of course, had been buffaloed by him, and he didn't want to deal with it. So he approached a rancher by the name of Holbrook. And asked the rancher to help him out. And the rancher said, "No, no, 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 no. I don't want any type of this business." Well, somehow that conversation got out, and Davy Crockett and his foreman start trying to harass and intimidate the rancher. Well, of course, the rancher didn't appreciate that. So a couple of days later, the rancher approached the sheriff and said, "You go ahead and deportize me, and I'll help you out with this problem." So one evening, Davy Crockett and his foreman were back in Schweng's Gambling Hall, living it up. There was a well just outside the, uh, Schweng's Gambling Hall. The rancher took position behind the well with a double-barrel shotgun. The sheriff and the postmaster, the sheriff had also recruited to help him out, took position across the street at the Barlow Sanderson stage stop. Eventually Davy Crockett and his foreman got done drinking, gambling, having a good time. Went, got their horses, made sure the parking meter had been all paid up because they were, they're good outlaw. They don't want to get ticket for having horses that legally park. Got on their horses and started riding down the road. The rancher jumps up from behind the well with the shotgun, locks up Davy Crockett, shoves the shotgun into his chest and says, "You're under arrest. You need to get off the horse." Well, Davy Crockett looked down at him, down at him from the top of the horse, shrugged his shoulders and said, "Shoot!" Well, the rancher didn't have to be told twice. Boom, boom, both barrels right in the chest. That spooked the horses. They took off riding down the road. The sheriff and the postmaster jumped up from the Barlow Sanderson, started shooting at him. When Davy Crockett's horse crossed the Simroon River, it stopped. They ran down to see what had happened, and by the time they got there, Davy Crockett was dead in the saddle. In fact, to get him off the saddle, they had to get a bar to pry his hands off the saddle's board because his death grip was so tight on the saddle. So Davy Crockett, the namesake of Davy Crockett, the congressman from Tennessee, is buried in the Simroon Cemetery, just atop the hill there. And when his father heard what had happened, he came out to see the final resting place of the son. They took him to the cemetery, took him to the grave. And the head of the grave was a little generic, wired-together wooden cross. He reached down, pulled out the cross, threw it aside and "This will not do for the grandson of Davy Crockett. We're going to have a proper marble headstone shipped out from Texas." Well, the headstone never arrived. So to this day, Davy Crockett, grandson and namesake of the Davy Crockett, is buried in the Simroon Cemetery. Nobody knows where. So the moral of the story is, if you're a good-for-nothing, dirty, wrong scoundrel, you'll be buried in an unmarked grave, and no one will care where you are. Pass it around! We need it more than you do! Alright, we're gonna do an old cowboy song. We need some help with this one, guys, so I'll let you know when. It's an old song about what you lose when you gamble, a little bit. Jacket diamonds, jacket diamonds, I've known you whole. You robbed my poor pockets of silver and gold. Beefsteak when I'm hungry, and whiskey when I'm dry. Ring backs when I'm hard up, and hell, I'm gone. Rye whiskey, rye whiskey, rye whiskey I cry. If I don't get rye whiskey, surely you will die. Need some help with the sign, let's hear it. Rye whiskey, rye whiskey, rye whiskey I cry. If I don't get rye whiskey, surely you will die. Rye whiskey, rye whiskey, rye whiskey I cry. If I don't get rye whiskey, surely you will die. Everyone! Rye whiskey, rye whiskey, rye whiskey I cry. If I don't get rye whiskey, surely you will die. Jacket diamonds, jacket diamonds, I've known you whole. You robbed my poor pockets of silver and gold.
Okay, everybody, with all this talk, outlawism in the Wild West, I have a theory that I would like to share with you all. I believe that a lot of conflict would have been avoided in the Wild West if cowboy town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. Go ahead and answer your cell phones since I made you put them on silent, and please come back because we've saved the best for last. Town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks. smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, thank you guys. The town planners had just made the towns big enough for everyone. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last. Alright, we're gonna take a short 10-minute intermission now for bathroom breaks, smoke breaks, go ahead and answer your cell phone since I made you put them on silent. And please come back because we've saved the best for last.